Five forty-seven, and I will call the Mandant Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for October twenty-seventh to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Langen. Commissioner Huber. Commissioner Mutter. Commissioner Horn. Mayor Freilich.
Here.
Commissioner Enfeld.
Here.
Commissioner McLean. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Hammond.
Here.
Commissioner Gardner.
Here.
Commissioner Renner.
Here.
Chair Robinson.
Here.
I'd like to thank everybody for their patience for this fifteen-minute delay, but next item, consider approval of the minutes for the September twenty-second meeting. Do we have any changes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Renner, second by Commissioner Hammond for approval of the minutes of September twenty-second. Any questions? None. Roll call, though, please.
Mayor Freilich?
Yes.
Commissioner Enfeld?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Renner?
Yes.
Chair Robinson?
Yes.
Minutes are approved. We'll move on to the first of our public hearings. Item number one, consider a building setback variance for Lot One, Block Two, Meadows Second Edition. Jordan?
Yes, good evening, Commissioner. Chair Robinson online will be Rachel to present this for us this evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Sorry for not being there in person. I had a family item pop up, so doing this virtually. I appreciate your patience with that. This is a building setback variance for Lot One, Block One of the Meadows Second Edition. Excuse me. The property is located at forty-six hundred thirty-fourth Avenue Northwest. It is on kind of an oddly shaped lot, which is where this variance request is coming from. The property surrounding our zone CB Commercial to the east, RMH Residential Mobile Home Subdivision to the north and south, and R seven Single Family to the west. The future land use plan identifies this area as low-density residential. So the applicant is wishing to construct a deck to serve as an existing patio door on their home. So the door is above-grade. It's unusable without stairs, patio, deck, or some other such entryway. They have noted that the building is placed the way it is on the lot based on a few other easements. The side yard setback in the RMH District is a minimum of five feet, so the proposed decker patio would leave about one foot between the edge of the deck and patio and the property line, which necessitates this variance request because deck or patio is considered to be part of the building for setback purposes. I believe there is part of a deck out there at the moment. This was based on a stop work order, I believe, from the Building Department because it is encroaching into that setback. So the existing home is placed at the side setback here, setback line, making a decker patio impossible to build while maintaining the side yard setback requirements. While they understandably want to utilize an existing patio door, allowing the construction of the decker patio would infringe on the setback minimums that are intended to maintain general health, safety, and welfare of neighboring properties, the hardship that the variance seeks relief from was not created by the zoning ordinance, but rather by the placement and layout of the home itself. So there are findings of fact within your memo there that the hardship is not caused by separations of the zoning ordinance, that strict application would not deprive the property owner of reasonable use of their property, that the requested variance is the minimum variance that would accomplish the relief sought by the applicant, and that the granting of the variance is not in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. I know that the applicant did provide additional thoughts that they should have in front of you tonight, that note their thoughts on how their hardship, what they felt was a hardship. So that should be in front of you. I'm not sure if Commissioner Enfeld received it or not, so I can try to pull that up quickly here for you. They've noted that they feel the shape of the lot with the drainage easement and the utility easement affects their ability to utilize their house. They can't use the patio door because there is currently a four-foot drop. The deck on the north side of the house would still be within their property line, and so they're asking for a deck or patio with steps on the north side because of the fact that it would be within the property. But it is still within that setback, which, as we stated, is there for the purposes of general health, safety, and welfare, and is caused by the placement of the home and the home layout rather than the property itself. So the recommended motion would be to deny the variance request for the setback on Lot One, Block Two, Meadows Second Edition, and I can answer any questions. There is also suggested motion, both in favor and in opposition, in your packet.
Questions for Rachel. Did you say you have not received any comments from property owners?
Our office has received none.
Would there be any space left, or would it be right on the line? Is there, like, one foot or two foot?
For those that couldn't hear, the homeowner and applicant said it'd be about one foot.
Any further questions for Rachel? With none, I'll open it up for public comments or questions. And if the homeowner wants to come up and speak, she may. I'll have you state your name for the record, please.
My name is Kesha Bauer, and we were constructing at the front of the house. We have an addition being built for a new bedroom and an entryway, and that takes the front door from the side of it to now the front of the house. And then the patio door was never really in use. We just wanted to be able to let the dogs out, let the kids go play in the backyard without having to go out the front door around into the backyard. With those easements being placed where they are, makes it kind of difficult to have gates back and forth all the time. We're attempting to try and figure something out with crating our dogs and things like that. Our patio door, I think, would be very beneficial. The neighbor is next to us with that United Rentals truck is actually my husband's best friend. He helped us put the deck up, and then we realized that we needed approval, so that was our bad, but we did get it all set up, so.
Okay, do we have any questions?
How large would the deck be?
It is big enough where if I lay down, I'm five-two, and it's like this much taller than me if I lay down. But we can shorten it up if we absolutely need to.
It's like four feet wide by how many feet long?
Oh, yeah. It's like five feet by eight feet right now, I'd say. Five and a half feet by eight feet.
This is a mobile home?
Yes.
Has the park said anything, or is this own land?
It's kind of difficult because the neighbor to the north of us is a full-blown house, but it's a modular with a basement. And then the one to the south of us is a mobile home as well. But then the houses across the street are all split levels, aside from a couple down the road, which look like trailers as well. I don't know if those ones have basements or not.
Do you rent the land? You own the land? Okay.
Yes, I'm not familiar with a building cold off the top of my head, but is, are there any other options such as steps? Would steps be permitted versus?
I want to say when he bought the place, they had a dowel screwed in so that the patio door couldn't be used, but I think his realtor said something like they could have used those like metal stairs that you see in mobile homes off the deck there, but those were never there to begin with.
Any other questions? Thank you. Again, we're taking comments or questions on item number one.
Jerick, would you happen to know the answer to my question?
Yeah, Commissioner Smith, just to answer on steps, we would allow the minimum probably a three foot, which I think at this point would still probably be in the setback of five foot from that line. So it's close and tight. So it makes it tricky in this situation, for sure. They usually, I know she mentioned they screwed the patio door shut, so it was never used up until this point, which having a second exit out of a building is definitely a safety concern in my book. If we can use a safety exit to get out, we would want that other than having incident happen.
Still open for public comments or questions on item number one. And with none, I'll close. Returning back to the commission.
I guess if it's like a safety issue, like you said, I'd feel better about there not being a safety issue getting out of house than there would be to get in the backyard. Stairs seems better than deck. Just if someone needed to get back there for an emergency, you could, I don't know.
Chair Robinson, my take on it is kind of the same thing, too. I like the idea of the stairs better just because it does give you access. It does give you that safety factor. And anytime, you know, you say your neighbor right next door, best friends and all of this stuff, well, things can change over. He could sell his property. The next neighbor that comes in there might not like having that deck right there. Anytime you grant a variance like this, especially when it's so close to the property line, you know, if I understood you, you bought the property, the trailer house was already sitting there when you bought the property, so you had no control over where it was sitting. But it appears that when the trailer house originally got set there, there was something, somebody kind of missed the boat a little bit when they originally set the trailer down, is what kind of appears to. The other question that I would have, and I don't know if you're the man to answer that question or not, but it appears that the garage in the front is actually close to the property line also. Was there a variance granted at one time for the building of the garage?
Chair Robinson, Commissioner Renner, I think it's right on the edge of what we would be required for RMH. The light pole kind of in the middle is close, but it would be five feet.
That's Rachel. I think-
It almost looks like-
Jordan and I looked at the site plan, and we looked at where the property line was, and the garage is right on the setback line.
Yeah. Okay, so then the trailer house must actually be more than five feet away from the property line, correct?
Commissioner and Chair, yes. It is like a foot or two difference. So if there's an, there may be, like, I think Jordan said, the stairs would be about three feet, which would still put them into the setback, but it would be less into the setback and probably less of a precedent-setting concern if it's coming from a safety concern and is the bare minimum versus a deck.
Yeah, I guess I like the idea of stairs a little bit better than having an actual deck there, just because I think, you know, you could have stairs with a little bit of a landing that would just parallel the house, wouldn't be near as intrusive or as close to the property line, and it would only be basically a foot away from where the garage is right now, anyway.
Yeah. Commissioners, if you look, you can see, I've got it pulled up on the screen, but the garage-house difference is that little spot right there. So this garage is right on the setback, and the house is probably that foot back, so. But the other thing I was going to mention, too, and I didn't say earlier, was a lot of times in a trailer or something like this, you would be allowed to set just a staircase or something up, not requiring any frost protection or anything like that, just to set up alongside of it. We always allow that for exit, even regardless on this one, if it would be just into the setback. So just so if you had to pull it away, you could and put it back. It's kind of mobile, so.
So you wouldn't need a variance for that?
No, I wouldn't require one for that, Commissioner Smith. But if you made that as part of it, it would really, it would really help me, if you wanted to make that motion, or however you guys want to handle it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm in agreement with the other commissioners. In terms of precedent, I think it'd be pretty dangerous to go with a one-foot setback here, but I think the safety issues and other, I think we should try to accommodate getting some steps in there so they have access.
So would, just to be clear, would the deck or the stairs, would they take the same amount of, would they take the minimum setback for each one, or would the deck be bigger?
Commissioner Gardner, three or four feet.
First step, sorry.
Yeah.
Going back to what you were saying about the movable steps, it's just the standard step that you see often in a, when they're setting up type of thing.
That's correct, Chair Robinson, yes.
I think I'd be ready to make a motion unless somebody else says anything else. I hate this part. So I'm probably going to mess it up, but I'll give it a shot here. So I move to approve the requested variance on the side yard setback in the RMH Residential Mobile Home Subdivision District for Lot One, Block Two, Meadows Addition from a minimum of five feet to a minimum of one feet, and move to adjust the findings of fact based on...
I guess I'll have a pause here in the middle of your motion. Based on what you said, you're allowing the one foot.
Well, I was going to put some caveat in for the stairs, but so we want to do, we want to do three feet?
I think we need to deny the motion.
And that's the route I would take. I would deny it.
Okay.
And then allow-
Allow the steps.
But we don't need-
We don't need-
For the steps to be approved, that's, we don't need to move on that.
Right. Okay, well, then I'm going to retract my motion. I knew it was going to fall on my face there. So I guess I move to deny the requested variance on the side yard setback in the RMH Residential Mobile Home Subdivision District for Lot One, Block Two, Meadows Addition from a minimum of five feet to a minimum of one feet.
Motion by Commissioner Gardner, second by Commissioner Renner to deny the request. Motion is to recommend denial, request variance of the side yard setback in RMH Residential Home Subdivision District for Lot One, Block One, Block Two, rather, Meadows Addition from a minimum of five feet to a minimum of one feet. Questions?
Roll call, though, please.
Mayor Freilich?
Yes.
Chair Enfeld, or Commissioner Enfeld?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Renner?
Yes.
Chair Robinson?
Yes.
And the motion to deny is passed. Second public hearing, consider a preliminary plat to be named Meadowlands Third Edition and a zone change to RMH for proposed Block Two Meadowlands Third Edition. Sorry, so are we going to do anything, or do we need to do anything to approve the stairs, or that's good to go?
No, I think we're okay based on just the safety factor. If it's a set of steps coming down, we will allow that, so.
Thank you. And we'll move on to item number two. Again, preliminary plat to be named Meadowlands Third Edition and a zone change to RMH for proposed Block Two Meadowlands Third Edition. Jordan, Rachel?
So this is a preliminary plat to be named Meadowlands Third Edition and a zone change to RMH Residential for proposed Block Two Meadowlands Third Edition. So it's a proposed zone change for an area that is not within the preliminary plat for Meadowlands Third and the preliminary plat for Meadowlands Third. The zone change request is Lot Six, Block One Meadowlands Second Edition, and the full preliminary plat encompasses that same Lot Six, Block One Meadowlands Second and Lots Three through Six, Block Two Meadowlands Addition. The property is at ninety-two Eighteenth Street Southeast. So I'm going to, if you can go to a map, I'll kind of explain that a little bit better because I think the numbers are confusing. So basically, the area to the east of Eighteenth Street Southeast is Lots One through Six, or Three through Six, Block Two of the Meadowlands Addition, and that was rezoned to RMH in a previous Planning and Zoning Commission meeting based off of them wanting to go through and make sure that the zoning would be approved before going to the preliminary plat stage. And then they have also included that area that is outlined in black on the west side of Eighteenth, and that is an existing area that is Lot Six, Block One Meadowlands Second and is currently RMH and RH, and it would go to RMH. So the proposed plat has two blocks. Block One on the east side of Eighteenth has approximately nine point six acres, and Block Two on the west side of Eighteenth has approximately one point one five acres. The proposed plat shows manufactured home lots varying in size between five thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight square feet and eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy square feet, although I will note that that particular lot has a stormwater pond on it. Lots on the west side of Eighteenth use Eighteenth Avenue for access, while lots on the east side of Eighteenth have varied points of access, including construction of new private street easements that are shown as access and utility easements. These are thirty-four feet wide. One of the private streets on plat dead ends at a Y. The plat also includes easements for an overhead transmission line utilities and a stormwater easement. The applicant, when they came in to request the zone change to RMH on the east side of Eighteenth, had intended to have about forty to fifty lots, which are intended to be manufactured home units with fee simple lot ownership. The preliminary plat shows thirty-eight lots on the east side of Eighteenth and five on the west side of Eighteenth. Connections to the property are along Eighteenth Avenue Southeast. The easternmost proposed private street terminates at the southern of the plat where it connects to Lot Two, Block Two of the Meadowlands Addition, which is currently undeveloped. The assumption would be that at some future point that that would be developed. The plat also shows a private street going west from Eighteenth between Lots Four and Five, Block Two, which would connect to South Frontier Trail to the west of the property within the existing mobile home community. There's currently a privacy fence blocking that connection. So all lots meet minimum size requirements. The minimum lot area is meant to be three thousand square feet. It does appear to be met exclusive of the access and utility easements on each lot, but it should be confirmed prior to the final plat. Internal street access. So there is a lot of information in your memo on this. The final recommendation is, in the memo, is to table this because we needed additional information. Abe and I had a conversation earlier today, as did Jerick and Jordan and I, and so we're going to switch up that motion to a recommendation to approve with some conditions, which I want kind of out there before I get into the streets, because we did get some more information from Abe as well, and I think it's relevant to this discussion. So all private streets interior appear to meet maximum grade requirements, which should be confirmed prior to final plat. The easement that is shown is thirty-four feet wide, which is significantly smaller than the required sixty-six to eighty-foot road width for a local road. The existing mobile home park that's zoned RMH to the west, which is south of the mobile home park and is inside the fee simple lot, so right where Jordan has his mouse right now, the Deerfield Road and Hawk Trail area, has thirty-eight feet with small sidewalks directly along the street. The thirty-four-foot easement, okay, so in the memo I have that it would not appear to accommodate sidewalks for stormwater infrastructure. So we did clarify with Abe, he does have in that thirty-four feet, four feet sidewalks on both sides, no boulevard, one foot of a mountable roll curb on each side of the road, and then two twelve-foot travel lanes, so twenty-four-foot wide streets. So no parking and no boulevard and a four-foot wide sidewalk. So the most recent private street easement that was approved by the city was in the Clover Grove PD, which has not gone through preliminary plat yet. It allowed a fifty-one-foot easement that had a thirty-one-foot paved area, a five-foot boulevard, and a five-foot sidewalk on both sides of the street surface. The Deerfield Road and Fox Drive to the west of Eighteenth, which are private street easements in the RMH District, are shown on those plats as thirty-two-foot access easements with additional seven-foot utility easements, which appears to be where the sidewalk and stormwater infrastructure is located. So those would be a total of thirty-nine feet, which matches that thirty-eight foot that we talked about, right? Sometimes that plat to construction is a little different. So Jerick, Jordan, and I discussed the thirty-four-foot easement, and we do feel that it is workable. It is small, especially with no parking on the street, but we are fairly comfortable with it at this point. And then moving forward into final plat, as we talk a little bit more with the fire department, and we talk about kind of how those houses are laid out a little bit more, how the infrastructure is laid out, we may end up making a recommendation to make them a little larger, but at the moment, we're comfortable with them. So we have reached a level of comfort that we did not have when we wrote the memo, so I apologize for the confusion there. Two access points onto Eighteenth from the east lots are provided, which was noted as a requirement in the original zoning approval in July of 2025. The zone change approval into July of 2025 required that the connection of Eighteenth Avenue would need to be completed as part of the Eighteenth Avenue construction. That would be required as part of the development of Lots Three through Six of the Meadowlands Second, which is being proposed as Meadowlands Third now. So right now, the Eighteenth Street terminates right at about that, right about where Jordan's mouse was, right there. The gravel itself terminates right about there, and then the remainder of that road is plotted but undeveloped. There is like a vehicle trail that runs through there, so that informal but clearly used trail goes north and enters to Memorial Highway across the former railroad bed. It uses an access point that's signed as a private road for BNSF use only. So the memo states that we should clearly understand this connection point prior to approval of preliminary final plat, that we would recommend it. We, again, we talked with Abe a bit. His intention, he's noted his intention would be that the applicant would connect Eighteenth to Memorial utilizing plans from, I believe, 2014, and Abe can correct me if I'm wrong on that date, 2014 connection plan. It's a write-in, write-out, and it would be that those construction plans and that final alignment of that connection would be a final plat item, but we are understanding that that is the intention and that that development would occur. that that is the intention and that that development would occur as part of this plating process to ensure that there are two connections to the north and to the south. You know that in the past, the applicant has had concerns about connecting on the north to the south, not wanting it to be a through street, but it is, has been a requirement consistently with this subdivision. So I, I think that that's very important and would definitely recommend that that be part of any approval process. Okay. Moving on, oh, one more access please, that's not in the memo, sorry. The connection point that we briefly talked about that goes between, thank you, right where Jordan's at, that goes between Eighteenth and Frontier Trail within the mobile home park. Right now, there's a fence there, it's platted as an easement. It should be developed as a through street across connection point, especially given that all of it is private. So that should be a final plat requirement. The zoning, RMH zoning for Block Two would be requested from RH to RMH. The proposed uses would be compatible with uses in the neighboring properties to the south and to the west, and would create one uniform zoning district throughout the proposed plat. The lot layout, the applicant provided a proposed lot layout for the development. We, we, Abe and I talked about this a little as well today. There's a few that, if you look closely, you can see they appear to be kind of built into the setback. Those, this is a concept, right? So we're making sure that the, the potential buildout is capable within the proposed lot so that the final plat doesn't look significantly different from the preliminary plat. There's a few places where we may need to have some additional discussions and clearly lay out in the development agreement the expectations. The gray line on the west, sorry, the east side of the plat is a, the gray dotted line there, yep. That one is a buffer area, so the, to the east of that gray line are trees, that's an existing buffer that the rezoning requested stay as a buffer as part of any plating. So there's one unit, I think, that would go into that, but probably not something we need to worry a ton about at the preliminary plat stage, but something that we can work out as we keep going with this. In addition, there's a few others that look a little different in that center block, where they go a little into the pink line showing the setback. The RMH District requires that the front yard be at least eight feet and that it can be set by development agreement, and so we'll work with that within, you know, between the final, the preliminary plat and the final plat to ensure that we're kind of meeting all codes and that, again, all lots are buildable, but at the moment, this concept appears to have a solid layout. Okay, items required from prior approval. One rezoning for Lots Three through Six was approved back in July. The Planning and Zoning Commission and City Commission approved that rezoning based on several items, which included that construction of Eighteenth Avenue would be required as part of the development, with no building permits being issued until the road construction is substantially complete, that they were required to lay out and plat this site, this is what they're doing now, buffering on the east side of the property between Lots Three through Six of the Meadowlands subdivision and the industrially zoned Riverwood Commercial Park would need to be maintained or replaced as part of the development. Connection of Eighteenth into Memorial Highway would need to be completed as part of the Eighteenth Avenue construction. There would need to be an approved development, streetlights, and then all road standards and access management requirements would need to be met. So all of those, I think we're well on our way to meeting. Adjacent property is zoning land use and future land use. We talked a little about the surrounding zoning. The future land use plan indicates this property is industrial, it's pretty clearly been moving away from that and was already zoned differently at the time. I don't see a huge conflict there. And then the future corridor plans do not show collector or arterial streets in the We recommend that the applicant work with Gateway, the, sorry, this is the owner, the owner to the west, to secure a connection to South Frontier Trail via the access easement with development to be required as part of the development agreement. There is a recommendation to review that Y termination within the plat, because the code requires a cul-de-sac. I think with that one, we can work with the fire department and ensure that we have met their needs there. The applicant should provide that plan for connection to Memorial Highway, which they've done. All technical requirements of the preliminary plat have been met, so the finding of facts are in there and don't indicate any major concerns. There were letters sent to eighteen adjacent property owners. And then, as noted, the recommended motion in the packet is to table the preliminary plat and zone change request until they could provide more information on the access and utility easements, confirm buildability of all lots, provide a plan for connection of Eighteenth to Memorial Highway, and then confirm with all relevant departments, including emergency management, that the Y intersection is acceptable in place of a cul-de-sac on the private street. As noted, we've had conversations with Abe and representing the applicant today, and feel that staff is comfortable with all of those items, and so we would recommend approving the preliminary plat, or recommending approval of the preliminary plat to the City Commission, with the understanding that between the preliminary and final plat stages that we would have clear understandings of and acceptance on all sides of those final street layouts, lot layouts, and plan for connection to Memorial and Eighteenth, with that information clearly being available at the final plat stage and being able to put, be put clearly into the development agreement. So, right now, conceptually, like I said, we would recommend approval at this time. That was a lot of information, and I can take any questions.
Rachel, just to be clear, should we get a recommendation to approve, the condition that should be in there is final plat presentation will indicate clear street and lot layout? Does that summarize what you're looking for?
You know, honestly, I would say, I would, I would simplify it and say that the final plat's application should clearly address all items within this preliminary plat staff report. That, that's how I would simplify it, so that you don't have to, like, go through, because there's a lot of bullets in this, right? And there's a lot of things that are understood, but will need to be fleshed out a little further. Sorry, I really hate that phrase, but like, you know, have a little bit more of a robust understanding of how they would actually operate between the preliminary plat and the final, but at this point, I think they're, they've got, they've got enough for, for staff to be comfortable with it, but I would, I would make it a broad approval. Would be my recommendation.
Any questions for Rachel?
Chair Robinson, Rachel, what was the idea behind that Y in the first place?
I'll, I'll take that, Commissioner, enter. So, the maximum distance that can be allowed for a fire truck turnaround is 250 feet. Anything beyond that will require either, this one is specifically called a hammerhead, so that the fire truck can, can turn in, up, and then back out to turn around, and, yeah, he's got it listed on here, but, and this goes to the end of the lot, but it's 287 as it sits, so it's close, and they obviously didn't want to plat in a cul-de-sac for that reason, but this is allowed and would be allowed by fire code. It is, it is preferred method if you can't get a cul-de-sac in, so.
Commissioners, that is one of the ones that we would want to double-check with the fire department between preliminary plat and final plat, because the code, for whatever reason, says cul-de-sacs are the only allowable option, but I, I'm not sure if, in my mind at least, the fire department should really make that final call there, especially in a subdivision like this where there's no lots at the end. But I, I don't personally think that, or professionally think that that's enough of a reason to hold up a preliminary plat.
And, and this is specifically in Appendix D of the fire code, which is adopted every, every code cycle, and I know we have one coming up in January, and will be adopted again, so it is, it's a common practice that we've used in, in Madden.
Just had a question about why they haven't finished that road. Is it just, is it pretty expensive to put the road in or to connect it to Memorial Highway? I'm just assuming that's what this holdback is.
Commissioner, I would pass that question to the applicant.
Is the applicant here? Yeah, we'll, we'll bring you up, yes. My other question, Rachel, is, there's two parts to this request tonight. One is to zone change to RMH, there's no issue with that either.
Correct, yeah, sorry, I apologize for that. Yeah, there's no, that one, there weren't really many questions about to begin with, and so, like I said, I apologize that this memo was confusing and that we managed to iron this stuff out today. But yeah, no, no concerns regarding this zone change.
Thank you. Any other questions for Rachel? Jordan? With none, I'll open it up.
Good evening, Commissioners. Abe Almer with Independent Land Surveying and Engineering. We did go through a couple of things with Rachel earlier today, answer a couple of your questions. Eighteenth Avenue, you're allowed to have one access up to a certain number of units. Currently, the existing, I believe, is over the exist, the number of units that you're actually allowed on the west side. So that, even to add one unit over there, you'd have to have a secondary access. It is a very expensive street, it's probably $800 to $1 million just to build that street to the north to connect to Memorial Highway. That's just a shot in the dark, but it's probably going to be about that much. So, the applicant originally was going through other options for a secondary access of trying to go through the western property and provided an access easement to the western trailer park, I forget what that's called. That wasn't sufficient to the city, they wanted the connectivity and everything else, so with the option to actually go from RH to RMH and actually have sellable lots that he can sell the unit and sell the lot, and, and leave this in a homeowners association for them to maintain the streets, water and sewer, what have you, all the private utilities, that's pretty much the only option that he could see viable to actually make money off of this project. Things get expensive, and nowadays, they're even more expensive. The connectivity, I, I think the Eighteenth Avenue connection, just to clarify, the land to the north of this is zoned commercial, it's, it's Meadowlands Second Edition, there is a platted right-of-way all the way up to Memorial Highway. We are looking to utilize that corridor, that existing right-of-way, city right-of-way, and go with the original plan that was presented back in 2014 to connect to Memorial Highway. It would be a write-in, write-out off Memorial Highway because there is a median along Memorial Highway, and the new plans are showing that median to stay between eastbound and westbound. I have talked to NDOT about, NDOT about this. When we get to that design stage, they want to be able to review everything, review everything for the connection and all that stuff to be approved before we go out as part of our package to go and build the street. So Eighteenth Avenue would, would be there. I think with the plating process, the number one thing that the city has to remember is to put that connection for Eighteenth Avenue as part of the developers' agreement, that nothing can be built until, or no units can be brought in until that Eighteenth Avenue is substantially complete. The other option we have talked about too was to put in that secondary access to that west, Trailer Park, sorry, I can't remember the name of the trailer park, Frontier Trailer Park. We are looking at that as a gated emergency access only. We don't really want their extra traffic going through our property. That's one big issue that we were looking at originally, was trying not to make this the through street for them to get out. Not to be mean neighbors, it's just the extra traffic, obviously with the old folks, this is a 55-plus development and stuff like that. We wanted to try to minimize the traffic through there, so. But we are looking at paving that access and putting in a emergency gated secondary access for them. We don't need it anymore if we build Eighteenth Avenue. They need it. So, that fire tuck turnaround, it's actually 150 feet. Anything over 150 feet, I do site designs too much, we have to do this all the time on commercial sites, different things like that. As Jordan said, it is part of the code, is one of the acceptable turnarounds. I have talked to fire at the pre-planning meeting, he didn't really have an issue with it since we commonly use it on a lot, but we'll go through the final plat process when it comes time to make sure we have approval. Any other questions that you guys may have?
Questions for Abe? Thank you.
Thanks.
Taking comments or questions on item number two? And one last call for comments on item number two. With that, I'll close, return it to the commission.
Somebody else first.
Mr. Chairman, I'll give this a shot, we'll try to keep it as ambiguous as possible. I move to approve the preliminary plat Meadowlands Third Edition and zone change from RMH and RH to RMH residential, with the understanding that between the preliminary plat phase and a final plat phase, that the city and applicant will work together to work out any final details related to construction.
Second?
I'll second.
I was just kind of wondering, so some of the things that maybe seem that they're in question, I'm just wondering if they are going to be included as part of this motion? For example, the connection to Frontier and the gate, and I don't know if there's any, are there any unresolved things, or is that, has that already been stipulated in there? And that, that would be, is that part of this motion?
I guess that's what I was confirming with Rachel, and she just basically said, leave it as plain as we can.
If I, may I speak?
Yes.
Okay, I, yes, I agree. I, I think there are still a number of items that are in flux where the applicant and engineer have kind of said, we don't have the ability to, like, go more in-depth at this stage because of needing kind of those assurances to move forward. I think staff is satisfied with the stage it's at, and so I think the items in question... I think staff is satisfied with the stage it's at, and so I think the items in question, I think, are covered by the motion that was made essentially saying between preliminary and final, um staff and applicant should work out any of the, all of the finals, all of the final details, right? Um, related to the items that are in question, because yes, I would agree with you, things like that gated access between these two developments i- is in question. So unless there's like a firm opinion from the commission, I think leaving it vague and saying these need to be worked out before you come back to final plat is a, it makes sense to me.
Mr. Chairman, that was exactly my intent of the motion, and I don't know if I worded it right, but I I wanted to give discretion to the staff and the applicant to work it out, not tie their hands on anything.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the motion? With none, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Freilich?
Yes.
Commissioner Infeld?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Renner?
Yes.
Chair Robinson?
Yes. Motion is passed. Next item, uh consider a preliminary plat for Kaido's South Heart Terrace Fifth Edition. Any zone change from R seven to R three two and R seven? Jordan, Rachel?
Sorry, this was intended to be, it's it's an old business item. Um, and so it is, I don't believe it's been advertised and it is still tabled.
Okay, so we're still at that stage to continue it forward. Is this an item we have to address on a monthly basis until they get those items?
Yeah, Chair, at the last, um, in the last like month, uh, when we, when we originally just kind of tabled it, they had intended to come back fairly quickly. Um, I know that Abe is in the room and has been working on this, he might have a better update. I think it will maybe be a bit, and so maybe it can at this point be removed and we'll want it to be re-advertised. Um, I'm not sure if he has an opinion on handling that.
It is advertised, so we we'll open it up for public comment here if Abe wants to update us.
Good evening, Abe Ballmer again with I L S E. Not much to say here, uh, we're still working with the neighbors, uh, we're going back and forth, and I can't give you a lockdown timeframe, but we'll try to give you guys enough that if you have to advertise it, everything else, um, for public comment, we try to give you as much time as possible. We're, right now, we're, it's, the ball keeps on going into our hands, into their hands, into our hands, into their hands, and you know how it goes, so. It's, we're getting closer, inching closer, but uh I'd say another month for sure. I don't know if it'll be on the next month's meeting.
Okay.
It can't be for sure, so.
Okay, we appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks. Again, it is open for public questions or comments. Last item under other items, Kaido's South Heart Terrace, any questions? With none, I'll close and return it to the commission. I think at this time, there is a suggested motion. Um, they do have the month, the September's still typed in the suggestion, but uh I don't believe we have to state a month of what meeting it'll like, it'll actually arrive on our table. It it's it's published, so we would have to have a motion, yeah.
Chair Robinson, I would move to table this primary preliminary plat and zone change request until applicants bring it to to the next meeting, to to a meeting.
Yeah, yeah, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Renner, second by Commissioner Hammond. Motion is to recommend to table the preliminary plat and zone change until uh applicant and neighbor uh finalize their discussions for the city. Questions on the motion? With none, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Freilich?
Yes.
Commissioner Infeld?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Renner?
Yes.
Chair Robinson?
Yes. And the motion is passed. Anything else, Jordan? None, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I'm also second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pole, same sign. We are adjourned, thank you.